At this time, at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call please.
Brian Giesi.
President.
Doug Houston.
Present.
Brian Mahan.
Present.
I am present.
Cody Brubisky.
Present.
At this time, for those who are able, stick your hand under the flag of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, virtue card greeting.
Virtue card greeting. Uh, tonight's virtue is integrity. Integrity is living by your highest values. It is being honest and sincere. Integrity helps you to listen to your conscience, to do the right thing, and to tell the truth. You act with integrity when your words and actions match. Integrity gives you self-respect and a peaceful heart. You are practicing integrity when you think about what virtues matter to you, stand up for what you believe in, do the right thing even when it's hard, willingly clean up your mistakes, think for yourself and avoid temptation. Affirmation, I have integrity, I stand up for what is right, I mean what I say and say what I mean. I am my own leader.
Thank you, Pat. Board of Education has developed the following guidelines to, to kinda give us a pathway. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. And at this point, um, I'd like to open the floor to any public comments. Quiet crowd, quiet crowd. Thank you. Um, first item on the agenda for tonight showcasing schools and student learning. We're gonna, we're gonna do an update from CWSA and then the Wise Academy update. So, Ms. Amy Foo, are you gonna be representing CWSA this evening?
Um, yeah, but we don't really have anything to update. Contract is our big thing, so.
Good, thank you. And so next then, um, Carrie.
So Carrie, you're on.
Okay, hello.
Hi Carrie.
No, it's quick. My name is Carrie and I'm the new chair of Wise Academy. Um, I'm actually here to just kind of watch and learn what you're doing because I don't know what I'm doing. I figured I'd watch the expert. Um, but while I got you, I'll tell you real quick, we have a hundred and fifteen students this year in Wise Academy. Little more than half are from within the district and then of course, little less than half are from outside of the district. Um, as a council, we are currently going through a training course. Um, we're learning how to be effective, forward-thinking, not quite so reactionary. Board members, we're learning how to provide services for such a broad base of learners and a broad base of communication, um, platforms. We're working on sorting out, um, different evaluation tools to, uh, figure out what's best to present to you this summer, um, to show our students' progress. So, that's it in a nutshell, thanks for letting me be here.
Any questions though that Carrie might be able to answer? Like how many are on the council right now, Carrie?
There's four voting members and six, seven total.
And one student?
That I included him.
Oh, you did, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for?
Well, we're just very happy with the work that you're doing and I know you had reached out to me at one point. We were gonna get together and talk, did I, did I miss a time or a meeting or?
We never actually set up a schedule, I wasn't sure what your availability was.
We'll get something scheduled and we can utilize Zoom and know anything that we can, we wanna be able to help you out as much as we can as well.
Thank you.
So, we're looking forward to, you know, the ongoing progress and, you know, getting back together in about, about six months.
Sounds good.
Is that about it for the, for the measureables?
Measurable, yeah, so we're working on the measurables right now.
Okay, fantastic.
All right.
Keep up the good work.
And she's gonna, you stay with us, all right? We'll do the best job we can to keep you in the loop.
Sounds good.
Okay, we're gonna move on to overarching results and overarching results. Let me just read that here. It always goes really slow when you don't want it to. Okay, overarching results are... This statement drives us. Nacusa School District develops students who sell academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community. And tonight, you know, this is a topic that we have on the agenda for every month. And tonight, we had the pleasure of having Ms. Christine DeLeagie here. And, you know, we're gonna be talking about, uh... Tama DS two.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
They're quite a team.
Quite a team, do you know everybody around the table guys?
I think so, yes.
Okay, fantastic. Um, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
And what I shared real quickly, just so the board knows is, is we want this to be interactive. So they're gonna share some sides and just develop a conversation with you so you have some good questions that you might be able to ask and learn more about ELL. And Brian certainly is our director that serves that population, so he can jump in as well. So, we really, we haven't really talked about this ever as a, as a board and really dug in and, and had a chance to, to develop some conversations around the, our ELL learner, so go ahead.
All right, well can you flip the slide?
Oh, I'm in charge of that, that's right.
So, um, it's not ELL and it's not ESL, it's now considered the EL student. So, what is an EL student? Um, an EL student is basically a student whose first language is not English. Um, a student's English proficiency is monitored using the access assessment. Um, this assessment, a student can score between a one and a six. So, we broke it down, our students that are scoring one to a three are basically acquiring social, social language. Um, just conversation, English, uh, not really academic language. Our students that are scoring three and above are acquiring academic language.
So, talking about this, our EL learners, like she's saying, this assessment is given once a year and it's for us to see how are they doing in their language proficiency. And what we're really looking at, like I, she said that, one to three is social language. So we're really trying to teach students as they come to school, well, how do you ask a teacher, I wanna go to the bathroom? Or I need to talk to a friend and say, how do I, can you join me for a game naming colors and objects? So that's really what you're focusing on when they're in that one to three range. And that's where a lot of times, when they get in the higher number, closer to that three, sometimes teachers are looking and saying, oh, their language is really developing. Correct, it is developing, but once you get to that three to six, that you still may see them struggle in classes because now they're moving from social language to, okay, am I understanding the vocabulary being used in classes? And that's a higher level understanding of the English language. So that's where we're working to help our kids move from that three level up into the fours, fives, and six where we can then say, you've acquired English proficiency and we can start looking at whether they can exit the program from being an EL learner, so.
Can you describe the assessment?
Sure, so there's four domains, there's reading, there's listening, there's reading, there's speaking, and there's writing. So they have, we basically test them four different times because the test is pretty intense and it is difficult. Um, for kindergarten, I sit one-on-one with them. The rest, one through twelve, is computer-based. So, it's difficult for those younger elementary students to go on the computer and attain to it the entire time. So it's Tama and I constantly, you can do this, do your best, you know, encouraging. But with the kindergarten student, one-on-one, I give the test to them and it's hard. I mean, they're asking kindergartners to write a sentence and being a kindergarten teacher of eighteen years, I know most kindergartners cannot write a sentence. So it is a really difficult test from that perspective. So, we do have one point two five FT service, um, in our district for the population of thirty-eight students. Um, currently, we have, half of them are at a one to a three and most of those are in the elementary. And then, the other half are three and above. Once a student gets to a five point O, they can be released from the program and we can dismiss them. New this year, they are, the state has offered a four point five. If they've gotten to a four point five, we can prove with a portfolio or an observation checklist and we can hand that portfolio over to the state if they want. But if they've received a four point five or higher, we can actually exit them if we have proof that they, yes, are proficient in English. So, we're hoping that we can really get started on that. So the range of services we offer are, we have a National Geographic program and that is really for our newcomers. We just received two newcomers from Mexico in January, a kindergartner and a first grader that do not speak any English. So Tama, thank goodness, has worked with them really one-on-one the entire past month.
Right.
Minus the snow days.
Oh, we got snow days?
Yes, we do. And so, we're working on this National Geographic program, which is basically, you know, we're really just asking them, hi, how are you? Learning, just learning really basic English skills to get them to verbalize those along with colors, numbers, the alphabet, just really starting slow with them because they are, you know, five and six years old. And so she also works with small groups and so do I, we work with them in the library and she takes them to a, a smaller room. We have a lot of translation support with her and on the next slide, I think it says, some of the support that we give for the families. She, um, provides newsletters that are bilingual. If classroom teachers need something translated, Tama is awesome at helping us with that. She also attends parent-teacher conferences with families that need translation. So a lot of times, families come in and they don't speak our language and yet the teacher needs to get communication across and Tama is there as their mediator, which is wonderful. Kristen, is it all Spanish? We have one family that is mom.
Oh, okay.
Otherwise, most of them are Spanish, yes.
Okay.
She, we also attend meetings, like if the student has an IEP, we go to those together and just learn how we can help the student more.
And just so you know, cause Chris used the term newcomer, so newcomer is a student cause to identify as an EL learner, we do a screener when they come into our school to see if they do qualify. And how we determine that a student should be assessed, there's a home language survey that they fill out when they enroll in our school. And if they say, hey, we speak another language at home, we screen to see if they're an English language learner. And from that, if you score a one point O, you're considered a newcomer, which means you have right now, very minimal English at all. So that's why a newcomer is, just so you know.
So, we have a couple newcomers.
Yep.
So, what we're working on is really trying to close the, the gap with reading and language and, and providing the additional language support that these students that are coming to our school basically not understanding what we're saying to them, just to get them some social language and really work hard with them to pronounce our words, which is very difficult as well. Um, we're also working on defining our program guidelines by creating an EL handbook. We met with a CISA representative last week and she helped us create this handbook that Brian has the hard copy. And, um, so we're, we're working on that, we're not quite finished yet, but we're really trying to make it so that a teacher can come in, look at that handbook and know exactly what kind of service we will provide. Um, and then I also wrote about the portfolio system when the student gets to a four point five, which we are, a lot of our thirty-eight student, students are probably going to get to that for
Awesome.
this year, we're hoping. So we're really hoping that we're able to exit a lot of them in the next year or two.
And one of the things, as compared to other districts, our numbers are, they're lower. They're not as high as compared to other districts. So as part of our handbook, we also put resources for teachers of what are good teaching practices and good strategies to use for our EL learners. So that way, it's not just, here's how they qualify, here's what we provide, but to give teachers ideas of accommodations and supports that they can do in their room to help our EL learners. Because though, Tama, wonderful, you know, and she's helping some of our newcomer students, there's only so much Tama to go around. So when she's not in the room, here are some strategies and things you can be doing as they're in your room to support them. And some of them talks about making sure they have, um, good language examples, so pairing them in groups is actually a great strategy for our EL learners, for them to start hearing other kids talk about it and practice talking about it. So just giving them some of those pointers to say, here are strategies to use.
Uh, when you say our numbers are low, is that just the, the solid, or is that the percentage that's low? Or just a low number compared, you know?
A low number compared, just to other districts, our size.
Okay, but percentage-wise, is that number low?
I think we're a bit up, aren't we, actually as a district?
This year, we're up a few students compared to last year.
Right.
But like in comparison to, like, we're very comparable to Adam's friendship. They have maybe even less numbers than we do, I'm trying to think of the other people that go to our meetings.
But I mean, like, we've got what, like twelve hundred students, something like that, total?
Right.
You know, then adding that thirty-eight, you know, you know, compared to a school of maybe five hundred that would have thirty-eight, then our percentage is low. But if compared to a school that's got two thousand, that has thirty-eight, then our percentage would be high.
Yep.
That's my question.
So you're saying, what's our percentage right now?
No, I just, you said, our numbers were low.
Okay.
And I wanted to know if that, just that number is low, thirty-eight?
Okay.
Or the percentage is low? Whatever the percentage would be.
So the percentage of students?
No.
Percentage of our total population?
Right, yeah.
It's, it's smaller.
It's a lower number, it's a smaller number, yes, both ways, sorry. So it's both ways, yes.
Yes.
And the funding that we get is?
Very, like one twenty-three or one twenty-six or?
Yeah.
It's not very much.
Yeah.
And so we get a few, and that's, that's what's doing the handbook? We do some professional development, what other types of things have we done?
So for some of it, it has been the professional learning of both Kristen and Tama to create these supports. Because when I came, we started having these meetings to say, how do we build our EL program? Because Chris was new to the EL director position. So we were talking, well, how do we create a system around this to say, here's how we identify students, here's how we exit them and make sure we have all that in place? So it's been professional development for us as a group. But then, we're now starting where we have the supplies cause before that too, when we had a newcomer come, we didn't have a curriculum or things to work off of so we can teach that social language.
We purchased the National Geographic newcomer.
Yep, so those are the things we put into place and now that we're getting those supports for students in place, we're starting to say, how do we support our teachers, so.
Okay.
I've also purchased at the elementary level quite a few, um, Spanish books so that our students that come in, cause primarily it's at the elementary school, um, they come in and, and they're really excited to take home a book that mom and dad can actually read to them too. So it's, we use some of that money for that as well. Okay, so what still needs to be done? We need to continue to develop and refine our EL handbook, um, continue to educate staff on how they can support the EL students in the classroom. And elementary school teachers are generally really good at providing support because they already use a ton of visuals and they do pair students up with other students so they can help each other learn. So, our, our staff is doing a really phenomenal job of helping them. And then, continue to make all our documents available in their native language and Tama has done another great job as well. Do you wanna talk about it?
She's there, she's doing fine, isn't she, though?
Would you like to hear it?
No, I think, I mean, I just wanna say, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful working for, but I, I love my job. I love what I do and I think it's very rewarding that when I see, like, two years ago, a year ago, that we have that high schooler and that when he left, it, it was just amazing. Phenomenal, the way he learned and the way it was just, it's, I don't know, I, just the way I feel, it's just phenomenal. I love my job, that's what I wanted to say. I love what I do and I think this is great. And thank you for everybody's help.
So, yes, we had that one student from Honduras come.
And he was a newcomer, right?
He was a seventeen-year-old newcomer who only went to school till second grade in Honduras and then he was seven, transferred up to seventeen years, he came. So he was social language at a second grade level. It was just like for him to work with us for a year and a half, we had him. And he left speaking English, like it was just so amazing to see how hard he worked and.
He worked really hard and, you know, and it's just like, and I see with our two newcomers, especially the first grader, he tries and he's trying really hard and, you know, I guess, sometimes he gets frustrated and I see that. But, you know, he's really trying and I, it's just like, this is what, this is all about and we're gonna try our best to do, to help him and be successful.
And Tama takes the job home and she's working with parents.
She called me from Italy for crying out loud.
So, she is regularly visiting with parents and, and connecting with, you know, with newcomers that are coming into the area and getting them hooked up with the school. So we appreciate both of your efforts and all that you do.
And Tama has been very vital to that last point, just so you know, about can, continue to making all documents available in family staff language. That's the one, well, one of the parts that is still a legal part of EL because like our enrollment forms, things like that, we have to make sure that we have available bilingual because that's a legal requirement on the district. You gotta have those forms for enrollment and things like that available in English and Spanish and Mongolian and things of that nature. So she's helped translate a lot of our enrollment forms and things like that to help us keep in compliance that way. So, that's just another area that we really appreciate Tama for, so.
And we'd love more ELL funding, or EL funding.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if you talk to our lawmakers. All right, well, thank you guys.
Thank you very much for sharing, and you, the work that you're doing, very important. Okay, at this time, Mr. Grill, um, anything you'd like to share with the board?
Um, just updates, that time of year where we're getting ready for all the assessments. So for our students with disabilities, I'm really working on getting accommodations and things like that in place to prepare for upcoming ACT, Wisconsin Board, all those things. So it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work. Also too, I've gotten updates of our applications being released here soon for us to apply for our Title VI Native American Education Grant. So I'm working on that piece as well so we can continue to pair with members at the whole chunk nation and provide opportunities for our students, so.
Got you, got a full plate.
Oh, yeah. Keeping me busy.
Thank you, Brian. Um, Ms. Knight?
I will defer to the second Friday count.
Very good. Um, student representatives, tonight we are lacking one, they have a game actually tonight.
Yeah, so if you get a chance, get over there after.
They're playing, right?
The board meeting.
They're starting the game right now.
Yep.
Okay, next we have the CDFC contract approval. Um, there was a, there, there was a lot of work and a lot of discussions. Um, the, the CDFC Governance Council worked diligently on the contract. They met and went over the words, you know, sentence by sentence and I was able to witness some of that tedious work. And I wanna thank you for that work that was done, that you guys have been working on for four or six months now, probably.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, originally was on the agenda for January, however, we covered communication issues, we moved it to February. And we, we're, we're just so happy that, that CDFC has partnered with Nacusa School District. Um, it offers an opportunity for students that, that may learn in a different environment, um, project, uh, project-based learning environment. It offers them a way that they can succeed. So, it's, it's something that's definitely added to what Nacusa can offer and what, what our, what our community and our stakeholders can expect. So, um, at this time, I would like to, is there any discussion, gentlemen? Comments? Okay. Um, at this time, I would like to call for a motion to approve the CDFC contract as presented.
So, second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you again.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, um, Richard is working, the, the state has a new rubric that you have to check off to make sure that all the necessary ingredients are in the contract. So he's working on that with the state. So as soon as we get that document back, we'll have Brian sign it then.
You're, you're, you're ours, so, we got you. Thank you. Um, at this time, we also, we want to talk about the Academic Excellence Scholarship.
Yes, and Keith is not with us tonight, he, they've missed so many scout meetings because of the weather. Uh, they finally are having their first scout meeting, so I said I would cover for him. So, the Wisconsin Academic Excellence Scholarship is awarded to Wisconsin high school seniors who have the highest grade point average in each public and private high school throughout the state of Wisconsin. So we are very happy to recommend for that scholarship, Michaela Unbinson. Michaela and another student had identical GPAs and ACT composite scores. So the high school had to use ACT subscores to determine, uh, Michaela as the recipient. So congratulations to Michaela.
Fantastic, that takes a lot of work, Michaela, congratulations. At this time, I would like to call for a motion to approve the Academic Excellence Scholarship recipient, uh, Michaela Ametson as presented.
So, second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Start College Now approval.
Yes, we have one application for the fall. Uh, Britt Cyborn is pursuing a, the, the pathway of cosmetology and of course, we don't offer any of those courses here, so she's gonna be attending and taking some courses at Midstate. So we're asking for approval of that application.
Let's call for a motion to approve this Start College Now application as presented.
So, second?
We have a first and a second, all, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Second Friday count. Second Friday count, informational only. Ms. Knight?
Okay, so typically I talk about the second Friday count in February. And I did my reports like I normally did and I gave them to Diana to look at and she says, what is this? And I thought, oh, okay. So, um, she was right, it, it was a lot of mumbo jumbo according, you know, I needed to clean it up a bit, so thank you Diana. So what I did is, um, I, I created two graphs because, um, first of all, we're required to count the students twice a year, in third Friday in September and second Friday in January. Now, the third Friday in September is a very important count because it's used for our revenue limit worksheet and our state aid. So basically is one of the variables that tells us how much revenue we can raise in property taxes and state aid. The second Friday count is a little less important, but still important. It's a variable for the state aid formula. So, um, I'm recording on the second Friday count, it was on January eleventh, two thousand nineteen. And what I thought I would do, instead of doing all of those, those tables that just really confused everybody, um, I thought I would look at the past ten years to see where our enrollment was, where our transfers ins were, our transfer outs, and our FTEs. So the first graph, and then I thought I would separate it by brick and mortar and by virtual. Because now our virtual program is going, or is growing, we wanna see what's happening with the brick and mortar and with the, with the virtual. So your first graph is actually the third Friday count FTE trends for brick and mortar. And the last column is the January nineteenth, the January two thousand nineteen count. So you could see back in two thousand eight, uh, we had enrollment in blue of one thousand three hundred fifty. Uh, in January, we have one thousand one hundred five, so it was quite a decrease. Um, our transfer ins and transfer outs have, have grown a little, but not to the point where it's, um, worth mentioning, I guess. So the FTEs were at one thousand three hundred sixty-three back in two thousand eight. Uh, in January two thousand nineteen, it's at one thousand one twenty-four. And those FTEs is where we get funded, it's how we get funded at the state. They don't look at enrollment, they look at FTEs. So that's brick and mortar. Um, so then the very next graph is the third Friday enrollment FTE trends virtual. And we only go back to September two thousand fourteen when our virtual program began. So it's showing you basically five years of the virtual program. Uh, back in two thousand fourteen, our enrollment was at twenty-eight. Uh, this year, or in January, it was at one oh nine, so quite a jump. Um, now the transfer ins are very important in this graph because it went from seven back in two thousand fourteen all the way up to eighty in two thousand nineteen, January two thousand nineteen. The FTEs have remained kind of steady, that's the graph in gray. We went from twenty-one back in two thousand fourteen, we have twenty-nine in two thousand nineteen. So we have to remember that the FTEs are how we get funded, so they don't look at enrollment, they look at, um, FTEs. So then, the very last graph, I thought it would be interesting for you guys to see what the enrollment is by grade. So the third page is actually the enrollment by grade. And I broke it up between brick and mortar and by virtual. So you can see, like, for example, fifth grade had one oh eight back in September two thousand eight. Uh, in January two thousand nineteen, they're at seventy-two. So you can see how our enrollments are trending. And this is gonna be important data for our future discussions on funding. So then the memo also gives you some commonly used terms that, um, we talked about, uh, in previous years, um, just for informational purposes. So I hope this is easier to read.
I think it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's hard to get my mind away from those other little boxes and everything, but I like.
I know, I'm so glad she said something. She just called me an idiot and I took it, so.
It is, it is helpful.
It is, very helpful, so I, I appreciate it, it took me all day, but.
Cody doesn't remember the boxes, do you?
No.
Lucky. Poor kid.
Well, I'm gonna bring them back just because.
Just for Cody.
So if there's any questions?
What?
Yeah.
I'm probably just missing it. But why is our, our enrollment keeps going up, but why is our FTE?
Of what graph are you looking at?
In the virtual or?
In the virtual.
Yeah.
I don't understand that.
Yeah.
Well, the transfer ins are actually non-resident. And we only get funded on, in the revenue limit worksheet and the state aid formula by resident students.
We'll tell them how we get the money though, first.
Well, that's what I meant, sorry, are we educating for free?
No.
No, no. Um, what DPI does is through the open enrollment process, through the January, or no, the June, um, payment for state aid, they basically look at all of the transfer ins and transfer outs and they settle up. So, um, they, they give us a, a huge journal entry that basically says, okay, your state aid for June was supposed to be eight hundred thousand dollars. But your transfer ins, the students that you're teaching, and they're not residents, um, you're supposed to get three hundred thousand, so we're gonna add that on. And then they look at all the transfer outs, the students that you, that somebody else is teaching and that we got funded on. Um, they're saying, okay, so your transfer outs too, we're gonna subtract four hundred thousand and give it away. So it kinda settles up at the end.
So our enrollment is going up, so we're, we're, we're still bringing in money, but not to the, it's just in a different spot.
Right.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct, you're absolutely right.
And really, when you look at what's been, you know, our virtual is certainly helping support our district numbers.
What it doesn't help is our revenue limit.
Right.
So those students are not counted on our revenue limit worksheet. And that is a driver on how much money, revenue we can raise in state aid and property taxes.
That's why we're down a million.
So that's what it hurts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
How many, how many of the virtual students are, well, I guess what I, how many of them came from the brick and mortar? How many of them came from the school?
Oh, that I don't know.
You don't know that?
Nope.
Well, as you can see here, for sure, we know there's only twenty-nine that are in the district.
Right, but how many of them came from one of the schools, you know, and then, so we lost.
A good chunk of that.
So we lost that one but gained it another, so probably a good chunk of it.
Good chunk, okay.
Okay.
But we do have some families moving in that actually prefer virtual.
A lot of our virtual students are, are able to participate in our extracurriculars, um, such as band, sports, things of this nature, so, um, again, it's a, it's a, it's a way to, to, to bring these students in and do the best to socialize them and, and, and do the best we can to work with them. And we wanna thank that young lady up there on the screen, are you listening?
Yep.
Yeah?
Yeah, her son, as she comes for band. From Point, they drive over from Point. How many times a week?
Two.
Two times a week.
I think that's so important that those virtual students that they are able to participate in our, in some of the functions that we have here.
Thank you, Lynn.
Yep.
Very much. Um, and thank you for the creativity on the chart. Diana, thank you. Achievement Gap Reduction, informational only.
Thank you, Brian, yep. And AGR, or Achievement Gap Reduction, as Brian said, is an agreement that we have at the state and that it's, really benefits Humke. And just a quick recap, um, bi-annually, this time of year, in about June, what I do is I give an update on kinda what we've been doing and how we're doing with the extra money that we entered into agreement with the DPI. So I'm just gonna take a couple of minutes and just provide an, an update on that. And Terry put a couple, um, has it up on the screen for me right now. If you can look up there right now, just a, um, is that my first slide, or is that this?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to reflect on that. Uh, the second one, you know, last year when I came in and I made some, it's like, we as individual teams at the grade levels were making what we called SLOs. That's our student learning objectives. Each team had ones that, they weren't always the same, but they were tracking in that and then we were using that to measure our AGR. And I presented like, okay, here's what it looks like and here's how we're doing. But it was so splintered, it was hard to say, are we really making any difference? So, you know, when we had that conversation, I remember Brian pointing out, it's, okay, say, so what does this data mean? And I thought, yeah, we gotta do a better job just kinda working towards that data. So, um, with that then, we made, uh, some reflections on that, and this is what we did as a building leadership team. We have a long-term strategic goal for literacy. And those are highlighted there and on the side, and just to kinda tell you what those are really quickly. This is what we're shooting for in the future right now, eighty percent of our kids at the end of their third grade experience will meet or exceed, um, the forward exam and the area of reading. And then one hundred percent of them will meet or exceed the basic benchmark. And that's what we're working towards, so that's, that's the crown jewel. That's one, so by the time we leave Humke, we want all kids to know and demonstrate cares and we want all kids to be at, you know, a regular level reading. Those are our big goals that we're working for, everything we do. So with that, it's kinda like, okay, so that's what we're working for, so let's take and not have a whole bunch of little goals, but just these things that we're all working on, so there's lots of consistency. So then their AGR goal is really our SLO though, it's all the same thing, just for ease and just focus.
And AGR again has Achievement Gap Reduction.
And that's the one that the state says, hey, what's your achievement, you know, and that's what we, so it's really our SLOs. So each team has an SLO. On those two pictures up there, the one on the left where you see the blue felt board right there, what we have is, that's a board that we have that we're tracking. Um, at the very top, it says reading, and then I've got some numbers up there. Those are goals related to our progress that we're making towards our long-term strategic goal. Where are we at? So those two things that we just measured, now that we've entered into a, a new, um, goal, AGR, we started new, okay, not that we're ignoring everything that we've done, but now we're just really tracking that. And so that's why you see just that big blue space, 'cause that's what we're really tracking our march towards our long-term strategic goal. So that's what we're doing right now, we're pointing everything towards that. Now, how do we do that? Well, in that same room on another wall, we have a data wall. And on that data wall, all those little cards that are, you can see yellow, green, pink, orange, each one of those is a kid in our building. So what we do then is we, we have some key benchmarks that we, well, we have benchmark assessments throughout the year, beginning, middle, and end of the year. And what we're doing is tracking where are those kids at? And so on each one of those cards, what we do is we add another card to it each year. So here's a kid in first grade, second grade, third grade, and we've been doing that for three years now. So we're really starting to get some steam on that and tracking that and finding out where these kids are. And there's little codes on their circles, like this kid has an IEP, this kid is a EL, et cetera. And all that stuff is on there. So we use that also to drive our interventions and just track stuff and find out where we're at. So as you can see on that board, the far left, uh, that's emerging, then we have developing, meeting. And the one to the far right that's kinda cut off there, that's exceeding. So that's our system for tracking stuff. So what I wanted to do is just kinda highlight where we at and where we at. So as a part of our data wall process, Terry, would you mind? Yep. This is our current third grade class. Now, a couple of things on the bottom there, what I've been doing, you know, I, I like numbers and data, I do, but twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight, third grade, and then when they're in second grade, and then in their first grade. Right now, it's because we haven't, we've kinda been recalibrating. I can't really look back and make a lot of comparisons, but it's just interesting at this point. But I can't really calibrate because our assessment and how we've been developing our data wall has been evolving. And while we're coming to that place where we've kinda got a really good groove and we're learning from the, what we've learned is, this is what we know to be true and we can really get a real good sense of, are the kids going to make our long-term strategic goal? And that's, you know, which ones are there? And so that, that's where we're at right now. The numbers in the long story short, I wanted to tell you the process of how we're getting there. As you can see, that's the number of kids, seventy-three, and each one of those columns shows where they're at on that data wall. So what we're doing is like, okay, here's where they're at with the data wall, how reliable is that with the forward exam? Last year, it was kind of like this, here's our data wall numbers, the kids who are meeting, exceeding? Then the kids who were, oh, okay, then they took the forward exam and the, and the Badger exam, or the forward exam. Or, excuse me, the star exam, I'm gonna start over. Data wall, meeting, exceeding numbers? Forward, um, forward exam, or star exam, then forward exam. So there was a little bit of a trend down which told me that we still had to do some refining and really understand that process to make sure that we're hitting that. So what we're doing is, we're tracking kids in each year on the data wall with the object of making sure that they're moving ahead and getting towards that long-term strategic goal. This is where we're at. Now, individually, we kinda, we had a discussion as a building leadership team, we thought, you know what? We really, teachers are one of the, and hit the next slide. A, a couple of reflection points from our analysis here at mid-year. Teachers are really good at knowing their kids. They work them all day, they know exactly where they're at, what they need, and all that stuff. One of the things we kinda came to a conclusion is we need to have a better process for following trends as a grade level. I mean, the cards are up there and stuff, but some, you know, some kids do move backwards for whatever reason or don't move ahead, and so we wanna track that. And so that's things that we're debating about right now, is how to make sure that we're really all means all and one by one, hitting every kid and making sure that they're getting there. And I think we really have a good system, but it just needs a little tweaking right now. So long and short of it right now, uh, we're moving ahead. We want our goal is to shift all those kids to the right. Our, um, AGR goal is to have, or excuse me, our SLO goal, which is our AGR goal, is to have everybody move over one column. We don't expect a kid who's just emerging all of a sudden become a meeting, because that's a huge gap. But one of the systems and processes to play to move everybody over on an annual basis to get them up there. So that's really what we're focusing on. So, questions that you might have?
You answered my, your last comment there.
And we have put resources towards this with, we, we, remember, we, we traded up a couple of support staff for an interventionist.
Right, and so we're developing that process, and there's still work and things that we, we need to do, especially on the math side, which we haven't really clamped on to yet. But we really, our building focus right now has been on reading, literacy, and really developing those systems to move us towards that long-term strategic goal.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you very much. Field trip request. We have a request for a field trip.
Field trip. Pat, I was expecting you to talk about that.
Well, I can.
That would be great.
All right, um, this is the, the National Chess Meet. It's being held, um, March fourteenth through the eighteenth. We would be leaving, it's in Schaumburg, Illinois, which is the closest we've ever had it. And so we'd be leaving Thursday after school, competition would start that Friday and end on Sunday, and we would return Monday morning back to school. Um, taking the two vans plus a private vehicle to haul. The private vehicle would be used for, um, um, the, the extra coaches and the, and the female chaperone that's going.
Awesome.
And it's being fully funded by the chess club, so they're paying for it themselves.
Very good. Uh, call for a motion to approve the field trip request as presented.
So, second?
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. I wish you and your team well, you've had good successes this year, Pat?
Yes, we have.
Continue, keep, keep working on that.
What is this, what year? Six?
See, Tim, no, Tim and Brian, okay, let me think. Brian, our first team we had was actually, Brian was a senior, Tim was a junior, or a sophomore, graduated in eleven, so it'd be oh eight, eleventh year.
Of eleven?
Of having, of having a chess program.
But state?
State is our sixth year, I believe.
Awesome.
That brings us to, um, policy governance. And the first one that we're going to cover is operat, Operational Expectation Twelve, which is discipline. And we had our board workshop on discipline last evening. Typically, we have it a Thursday before, um, the meeting, to give us a little time to absorb the information. Last night, we had a very robust discussion, um, I believe we were here for two hours, three hours, two hours. And this discipline policy has grown in. And the nature of the discussion that we had last night was much different than the discussion we had three years ago. And the body of work that's been completed within that, within that is to be, to be honored. One, because of the timing that we have here, what I, what I want to do is I want to make a global statement about last night. But I, what I would request is that the board, as you took your notes last night and everything, would you communicate the strengths and weaknesses to me so that I can present, so I can compare that and present it at a later date? But I want to make a global statement and then I'd like to turn it over for, for discussion. Discipline itself, the policy, can you just read the policy statement?
Sure. Appropriately involve relevant stakeholders and staff in developing student discipline policies at each school. What is the school discipline, discipline policy? And who is included in developing the policy? The policy also calls that ensures, that we ensure that teachers, students and parents are informed of the discipline or expectations of students. How have proactive and reactive discipline practices been communicated with staff, parents and students? And then the last here, ensure that all policies and procedures regarding discipline are enforced consistently using reasonable judgment. And ensure staff are trained in proactive and reactive practices. So positive school climate strategies are used frequently and consistently throughout the school. And there are strategies which are alternative to exclusionary discipline.
Very good. Just a, an old, just a broad overview before we have other discussions. The strengths that I noted from last night and that we talked about were the advisories and how the advisories have been working for our students. We had a very Keith, Keith Johnson was able to share a very, a very good story from a retired teacher about the advisories. And that's done, that's gone a long way in allowing us to communicate with our students, give the students a safe person to work with and, you know, work on, on specific issues. Behavioral interventionists. Mr. Black and others, you know, Mr. Black in particular. And what you're doing at AMS with your behavioral interventionists is to be, to be committed. And then the work, one thing that we need to honor is the amount of administrative work that it takes to work through these discipline problems. And you and Mr. Thomas have demonstrated that and done a very fine job. And I think, you know, it's, it's been, you know, I'm talking in a global overview, but one must understand that underneath, underneath what I'm talking about, there are many, many systems and, and, and training. Just, just to, just to mention a few, restorative justice, MTSS. And I'm sure there's many others that I'd like to include at a later day when I can put some more time into it. But I wanna, I wanna really celebrate that. The tracking that, that we were able to look at, there's, that's a measurable that we haven't really had in the past. And it's good to be able to see that. And we, we, we like to be able to look at information. And I think that for myself, that's a global statement I'd like to make about what I heard last night. There are some things or, you know, maybe possible exceptions that I would like to talk about. But I'd like to turn, turn the conversation over to other board members if you have any comments to make about, yeah, last night.
You know, one thing, I think back of two or three years ago, when we were in the same meeting that we were in last night and how much different it was. Because last night, we were talking about positive things and thinking about, okay, how can we take steps forward? So really, the whole, the whole way that we look at discipline now is much more, in my view, proactive than reactive. We've taken so many steps, so many good steps forward. Last night, we talked a little bit about documented guidelines in all the schools. We talked about how the philosophy, our discipline philosophies more widely communicated. That was one thing that two and three years ago, we, we said was really something that we had to work on, that, that it wasn't understood. And now it's much more widely communicated. Not that there's not more work that has to be done, there always is. But the staff, throughout the district, parents, the students are all much more knowledgeable about our philosophy toward discipline. Positive results with restorative justice and, justice in responsive classroom, we talked about last night. So we're tracking those things and we can see that they're working, that was a positive. Just a, a whole, a more universal discipline philosophy is in place than it was two and three years ago, you know? As far as things that, that we need to work on, we talked about that last night too, where we talked about the training, that there, that there's never enough time, but that we have to work more on staff training. And we also talked about the guest teachers too, that, that we have to work, work more to get the guest teachers more on board. So it's more of a routine for them and they're more comfortable when they're here helping us, so.
Well, that's, that's what I was, the thing that hit me most was, was the substitute teachers and the guest teacher, how they've got stuff in place for them. So that they don't, when they come out, they're not saying, I'm, I'm never, don't ever call me again.
Right.
You know, that's, that's not happening. They don't believe anymore. So that, that was the.
Lot of positives.
A lot of positives.
And if I could just throw in one thing from the middle school, were you gonna read that email?
Yep.
Why don't you go ahead?
So we sent out our newsletter. That's more on me than anything else, I've been tired of getting it out. But I pretty much recap many of the things that we talked about last night of, you know, here's the results we've seen in responses and various other things. We have restorative justice philosophy. And we had a parent write back in and said the following. She says, "I love the restorative justice concept and obviously the proof is in the pudding. I've been consistently impressed by everything and everyone at AMS since we moved from Rapid School last year. I'm really glad that my three younger children will also be going there as they move up in grades, beginning with my Ava next year. Just wanted to drop you a line to let you know how much your family appreciates all the AMS faculty and students."
That's powerful.
That's the next message.
Didn't get stuff like that before.
Yeah, usually you get nasty grams.
We, we didn't get that one three years ago, did we?
No. We still have some work to do. And, you know, we, we do have to be critical in some respects when we look at a process as deep as this one. One of the issues that, that, that came up last night, and, and I think it's something that we really need to look, need to look at, is resources. You know, what we're committing or what we need to commit to resources to make this work. You know, the resources being committed at AMS and at Humke are substantial. They cost the district money. And, but without those, without those, without those individuals, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change the behaviors of those students. And that's what we're looking at is, you know, with restorative justice, is changing those behaviors. So that, you know, they come out of Humke, they're gonna be a little bit more ready for, from, for AMS. When they come out of AMS, Mr. Johnson's gonna have a breeze, they're all gonna be perfect little angels, right?
We hope.
No, but, you know, it, it is a growing and, and, and it, you know, and that's one thing we have to look at too, is that, you know, the process utilized at Humke, where you, where, where, I think, Brian, you used a word last night about the people, you know, how we can communicate with a kindergartner versus a, an eighth grader or a first grader, how can we communicate and work with the first or second grader as compared to high school students?
Yeah.
And that each, and that's one thing that the policies for each building took into account, was addressing those different approaches. And that's to be, you know, there's not a one size fits all.
Correct.
And it needs to be, be done there. But Humke had some rising numbers. And that's, you know, that's gonna happen at times. I just want to make sure, and I think the board feels that way, that you have the resources you need to, to do what you need to do with regards to doing what we, you know, all across the board. That we as a board are so committed to making the resources available. But with the understanding that we are stretched for money, a solid influence. But it's the truth, and it is, it's hard. But, you know, that's, that's one of the things I think we need to look at as far as an exception. And Brian, you want to?
Well, I, I would piggyback that, you know. It's pretty obvious that yesterday, yesterday's meeting was a bit better than the meetings of past. But I jotted down, the, the one note that I really came out with was I worry that we're so focused, and I discussed it last night, that we're so focused on the inclusionary practices in the classroom that we're, we may be alienating other students in the classroom. And I don't know how we can improve that without adequate resources. And we talked about, you know, John Thomas was here and saying, you can't, you know, this, this works, this works so well for those. And we see the results. So to me, I would rather have Mr. Strain working on other principal things and having the resources at that school to address the behavioral issues. If we need behavioral interventionists at the elementary school, then we should find a way to do that. I don't know how we can progress without at least looking at the resources. I think that's a conversation we need to have. I mean, for sure, that is a something we need to note. But it's something that I feel so strongly about that I don't know that I want to just revisit it in a year. You know, I, I, I think we should look at this seriously soon and come back to it. Is it to the point where we're compliant versus not compliant? I don't know. Maybe we need to look at that too. I struggled with this after the meeting last night, whether or not we're compliant with it or not. I don't know if we are. We're better than where we were, but are we, are we compliant? I, I think that we need to look at the resources at elementary school. And it's, it's not, I don't think anybody's fault, I just think there's a lot of work to do there. And that's the note that I came away with.
I have the same feelings for the Badgers being over at Humke.
And, and maybe John can, can speak to, he's the principal, but I mean, that's how, that's how I feel as a board member and a parent in their district, so.
Well, thank you, Brian. And I'll speak to it. By nature, I'm one, it's kind of like, you're just gonna figure it out and that's it anyway. And that's just kind of, you know, that can be shadows, you know? Cause I look at it, I think, okay, what can we afford? I know our current budget stays, so I'm not gonna ask for anything. You know, and that's just kind of my approach for it. And that's just how I, that's how I do things. So, and, and at the same time, I've had conversations with Rod, our school counselor, and a limited degree, Brian too, you know, people service guy, and Brian Grill. And just mentioning to him, you know, you know, trying to figure out how to create the systems that support it. And, and, and at the same time, I also think, you know what, you know, I look at it like this. I want to keep low classroom members. I want to have, you know, and that's my preference too. So there's a lot of needs out there and I, you know, as I look at it, and I also want to look at, okay, how do we create a system for intervention for math? We've already talked about the ones about that, I'm thinking about reading. So in my minds, it's kind of like, I'm thinking about this, like you guys, what you brought up right now, Brian. And then I'm also thinking about, okay, how do we keep low classroom numbers to make sure that we have a universal system in there? And what are we doing for our pre-K students so that they're not coming in and we're creating these triggers? And so there's a lot of, it's, it's not, you know, obviously, yeah, more bodies are great. And how do we get them in there? But how do we do it in a way that allows us to for, afford them? You know, I'm very sensitive to that.
Well, and continue to build capacity. Because if, we really have to be careful that, you know, Brian talked a little bit yesterday, you can jump to interventions. And if you don't have real strong practices, which we are really working hard on and developing, our teachers are doing a great job and our support staff. But if you just start plucking kids out, it goes fast. So we really have to be careful. And we do have Mikey right now, who's full-time over there as an interventionist. So it's not that we don't have any services there. And we also have special ed teachers in each grade level. So we have lots of services there. So we really have to be careful, I hear what you're saying. And we need to continue to study it, but we just can't keep throwing.
Well, then why can't we do it at the middle school? Why, why are they getting it and Humke's not?
Humke is though, because they have a full time. The middle school is two-part time. So it just looks different, but they both have an interventionist.
Well, and, and I get it, but the numbers that we saw yesterday for the beginning of the year were not good. And if we're only looking at the discipline policy, I appreciate John incorporate a couple of different.
Aspects of it.
Aspects of it. But the discipline policy, you know, if you read, part of it, which I, which I struggle with is allow, we shall not allow student behavior to negatively impact a school climate. Well, if that's, if that's what we're focusing on for this policy, are we doing that? Or can we do better?
We can always do better.
And maybe that's something, and, and the other sentence in there is shall develop and consistently enforce discipline policies to maintain safe and effective learning for every single student. I don't know that we're always doing that. And I'm not sure that I'm comfortable going a full year without revisiting it, I guess is what I'm saying. If there's things that we need to change, we should, we should work on it. That's all I'm saying.
That's all?
That's it. That's all I, I have about it.
For us tonight?
Maybe.
Just kidding. And those, you know, those are, you know, strong issues, and I'm glad that you have that passion, Brian. You know, I look at systems and I look at, and I'm not trying to diminish anything you said. But, you know, with systems, it takes time for those systems to, to become part of the process. But we do have to be cognizant about, you know, when, when are we asking our teachers to do too, too much? I don't like to see teachers go home crying about not being able to do their work during the day or coming to work feeling that way. And, you know, I think there's trauma on the side of teachers at times. And again, I might be being a little bit dramatic, but I might be being a bit dramatic on that. But, you know, I do have to say that overall, I believe that, you know, the discipline policy that we have is and does cover what I would consider not, it's not enough to substantiate a finding of a non-compliance, in my mind. And that's an issue the board has to decide. We have to determine that tonight. We're gonna check that box and note the exceptions. And those exceptions, as I said, I reserve the right to take some time to gather the information and write them up nicely and share them. And I'll get approval, you know, from the board members who could do that, have a special workshop. Because this is such a, you know, again, we had a good conversation last night and I walked her with a really good feeling and I don't want to, I'm not gonna ruin that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not ruining it, but I, I want to make just one other side note is when does, when, and this could have been done at any policy, but at what point do exceptions become non-compliance? I mean, you can have thirty exceptions, will that be not, like, do we need to discuss that at some point?
You know, I think if, you know, I kind of went, I'll try to provide some information. Doug, when we first looked at policy governance and looked at a non-compliance versus exception, do you, can you speak to that? I know there was, there was some information that we were provided, can't recall.
Well, one thing I'll say is that I think sometimes, sometimes it's gonna be difficult for us to be able to determine that. And it may be that we find some things that are not in compliance. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're not all rowing in the right direction, that we don't have, that we're not all working. That we're not all working toward a goal. Uh, but let's say that we go through and six months later, we find that. Um, and to Brian's point, that we look at some exceptions and six months later, we don't find that we're making any strides. We have to do something different, we have to change course, take some different action steps, you know. Even if we don't, even if we find some exceptions tonight, does that necessarily mean that um, we're not in compliance, no? But it, because when you look at any policy that we have, we're always gonna find something that we can do better. I mean, it doesn't matter what policy, every single one of them, there's always something that we can do better. Uh, Brian makes a good point, though, uh, let's, we we don't wanna be afraid uh, of putting some exceptions down. And then let's look at those exceptions and let's. Uh, make an action plan toward improving those, you know. That's not to say that, you know, um. I think it's better to, I think it's better to be honest with ourselves and and if we feel that there are some exceptions. Note those exceptions and fix them rather than. Uh, say that we don't find any exceptions and 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 move on, because the only way you're gonna really improve. Is to really, really look hard at, hard at it. And so I think if if we all agree with that, then I think. Let's look, look, take a hard look at it, let's note some exceptions if we do, and then, and then agree to take some action steps toward it. I mean, I think that's the best way that we could approach this, certainly an honest way.
Well, and the way I look, I mean, so, I mean, you, it's not like flipping a switch. But I'm saying, the conversations we've had over the last years. Have we not done what the board has expected over the last couple of years, so we're having these deep conversations? The entire admin team's hearing this. We've taken steps to get better, we know it's an issue. I mean, at what point, I mean, certainly, we're gonna continue to do the work, whether it's compliance or not compliance, you know what I mean? But, I mean, you can only go so fast with this stuff too. So, is it a time issue? Is it a, a capacity building issue? Is it a staff issue? We wanna solve the problem in the most effective way for building a better district. Better, bu- building a better experience for kids. We can do it incorrectly. And just keep throwing more and more money at it. Or we can do it correctly and build the capacity over time to really devote, to to deliver something. Far superior than if we just keep throwing. Cause we can, we we you, we we could put ten people over there tomorrow, and still, we'd need more.
Right, you could always have something happen within a classroom.
I'm not saying, I'm not at all saying we should be in compliance a hundred percent, cause I I agree with you a hundred percent, but at the same time, it takes. It it's, I mean, this would be the same, how come we have drug problems in Nacusa?
Well, what I'm saying, I I guess your point about throwing money, I won't say it's throwing money, I'm just saying. Should we rewind and say maybe this was? Every one of us here agrees that inclusion is a good thing. But did we jump in overboard and not have the resources at the upfront that we needed, and then we can go back, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either, but I've done it the other way, and you never get to where we are today if you tippy toe.
You know, we have to keep, you know, that's, we're not gonna take away from the quality of the discussion we had last night.
Well, this is quality too, I think, yeah.
Well, no, I I I.
I don't think that our discussions should be limited to a board workshop, I think we can have discussion.
I agree, but I don't wanna take anything away from the work that's been done as well, because these people deserve credit for that.
I don't realize I was taking anything away, anything away from anybody, I'm just.
No, he was, I think you, you were just questioning, are we finding ourselves in compliance when? There's, there's issues that are. Safe. And disruptive.
Yeah, I I openly stated that we're, we're better off now than we were three years ago, I'm not taking anything away from anybody.
Oh, no.
I'm tickled pink that I'm not getting phone calls at home all the time about stuff. So, I'm just questioning if.
You're wondering how do we make it better, you're like, what's the next step? Because you, from hearing what you're saying, cause like you're, you're saying, do we place the exemptions and, you know? Are there things to work on, of course, there are. And you know, like Terry was saying, is it, we need to build capacity? Is it looking at the resources, what is it, I think you're just saying, you just don't wanna write it. And then we come back next year and we're talking about the same thing. Yeah, and that's what, I just wanted to sum up, that's what I'm hearing you say.
Right, right. And can I just in- interject in just for the areas that I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the narrative that. Inclusion is what got us to where we're at, as far as uh, discipline areas. I will note that, you know, we've certainly had a lean in, we've got a lot of, we've had a lot of work we've been doing at AMS. Various things, but I can't say that the students who are most frequent flyers that we've had to lean in are, are students with IEPs or certain areas. It's certainly across the board, are there some with, yes, are there some without, no, it's not, it's not an indicator, and so. I would say as, as we're focusing on the variable where to look in, I don't think inclusion versus non-inclusion is the telling point.
Well, well, John mentioned it last night, John, you mentioned that some of the. The first couple of months, yeah, in your building, the first couple of months. It's uh, the school year that the incidents were higher, but they were, you you already looked at it, and you said that they were tied to a couple different groups.
Right.
And and so you you've already done some work to start to look at that, to see what, what can be done.
Right, and that was one of the things that Brian gathered, him and Joe, our school psychologists, gathered data, we looked at it, we disaggregated the data, we saw that, oh. We're having a disproportionate number of young boys and students with IEPs overrepresented in our majors. So, then we as a group, what we said is, okay, what is it we need to do, and we have our social emotional teams working together, and said, you know what? We recognize this with our universal is not is where it needs to be. And this is one thing that we're going to do, we're, we're, now we're taking action on that with the purpose of bringing that number down. Along with some other things too, to bring that down, and we believe that that'll help with that, and we're in the middle of implementing that right now, and it takes time. But, we're working towards it, and with the other things that we consistently do, that that helps too, but we're hoping this will then also bring it down further.
And I I think it's important to note that everybody around the table, I I I hope you understand that we are taking it just as serious as you are. We're passionate about it as well. But it's tricky.
I I have no doubt it is, I'm just um, pointing out the notes from.
No, I I appreciate that, I and. I I I guess I'd like to know what you would like to see different, you know, by the end of the year, I'd, we'd love to work on that.
Well, I think we could start by having a conversation about why the middle school was so successful. And see if we can make adjustments at the other schools, if, yeah, I, I don't know.
And it's good to do that, and I think, you know, one of the things we want to is, is collaborate with. We wanna have a final product here, that student when they walk across the stage. All have this Nacusa experience and this is positive experience, and where we brand this kid, and this is what they do, and this is what it looks like, and that involves cooperation. And one big school district and schools working together on that, and we're more than willing, and we do that. And I think we do learn from one another, and I wanna make sure that that happens too. But I think, you know, in terms of looking at it, in terms of resources, building systems and making sure that we are responding in a way that's appropriate.
And I just wanna share too, you know. There's the collaboration between buildings, but also too, I just wanna point out, you have to think of the development of the child at those ages too.
Right, which we discussed yesterday, yeah, and I get it, yeah.
Cause if you make it the same, it's, it won't work, exactly, it's totally. But you're still gonna, of course, collaborate and glean ideas off of each other to say. This is something we can try that's developmentally appropriate, it may not look the same. We're gonna do it a little differently, so that way we're saying, here's what may work for a kindergartner. And that's another part with the numbers too, you wanna consider, you know, some of those numbers are hires while they are getting kids at their first experience in school. And for some of those kids, they've never been in an organized educational setting. So, some of that increase at the beginning of the year, this past year was higher, but you also have to think. You have kids coming in for the first time. So, a lot of those calls for majors, they're going into a school setting, and some of those students that were in that beginning of the year bunch. As soon as they learn, oh, this is what school is, this is, is the expectations. Some of those numbers naturally at elementary school start higher because of that kindergarten influx.
So, so knowing that, though, wouldn't it make sense that if, if we have one full-time behavioral interventionist in the middle school has two part-timers, and that's one, but we know that. We're having all, you know, because it's a new, new school and the intellectual, you know, they're, they're kids. Wouldn't it make sense then to have more staff at the elementary school?
And we do, we've got a special ed teacher in each, at each grade level. But we we can do better, I'm not making excuses, we'll, we'll continue to look at it.
Diana, you've been keeping a good track of these, I think you and I can get together, have you got, I think we've all expressed. Where we feel, and I think we can come up with the strengths, Diana, and write off the exceptions in the language, Brian.
We gotta have some exceptions.
I would, I. Are we in compliance with this?
I I would, I mean, I'm gonna vote that we, we're in compliance, but there are some exceptions.
Yeah, I mean. I feel strongly about what Brian's saying, and I wanna congratulate Mister Spring and Mister Black on the big strides that they made. Through the past few years, and, you know, my concern, you know, along with Brian's is, is at the high school level, we didn't really talk about that, but. I think there's a lack of consistency with, you know, what's going on there, and if they're not consistent with the disciplines, kind of falls on. A lack of respect to those teachers and, you know, administrative staff that's on that side, so. Um, so with the high school. You know, that's just my, my two cents is they need to be consistent in that area with the discipline, so.
Overall compliance with the policy?
You know, I I would vote that we, we are in compliance, but there are, we're in compliance with the strides that we've been making, but. There are some exceptions to, to what I just discussed, so.
No, I, we'll put those together and be able to share those.
I think we're in compliance, I, I mean, are, is there always gonna be. Uh, improvements to be made, yes, because as soon as we think we've arrived, we've lost. Cause we'll, you know, we're fooling ourselves, this is gonna be an ongoing work. That it's gonna, you know, it's gonna have to be tweaked, you know, all the time. And I think John is, John is working on it, and his team is working on it, and Brian was, uh, very diligently to improve it. You know, to where it's minimal occurrences. And I think that's the only place we're ever gonna get is minimal occurrences. And if we can keep that number as small as possible, I'm okay with it, is it ever gonna be zero? No, you're fooling yourselves.
Let me ask the question that if this board on any policy said we're not in compliance. Versus we're in compliance with noted exceptions, what's the difference, what action is the difference? If we say absolutely not, we're not in compliance with this, does that change anything? What happens?
Well, if I, if I could say something to that, I think. The difference would be that whatever exceptions were noted. Uh, that would at least uh, tell uh, the administration that these are the areas that you need to focus on. You know, if if we find ourselves in compliance, sure, there there still be areas to focus on, but they, maybe they wouldn't be. Coming from the board, maybe they would be coming from the administrative group. Uh, as a whole, and they would come up with their own strategies or, or areas to focus on, I guess that's the way I would see it.
I guess that's how I interpreted it too, and I guess for that reason, I would vote that we're not in compliance with this, with this policy.
We do have a majority of the. The people that have spoken, I need to remain, remain neutral. So, at this point.
Would you share though, with? The team, what you would consider, what needs to happen in order for us?
With what we said is. A a direction from the board, I mean. I wanna take in seriously, and I'm not sure that non-compliance is are taken seriously, I mean, I'm sure they are eventually, but I wanna. Like I said, if we could revisit it, that's not even an option, so.
No, it's an option. Something that we.
I asked about it, apparently nobody knew it was, so.
Di- Diana, I'd kept your comments with regards to that, and we'll get that in there, and we'll work on that and share it. Um, my, in my opinion, a non-compliance is if we are totally not doing what, what we've documented. If we're totally not doing it, that's a non-compliance, and there's many other factors that can enter into that, and Mister Black could tell us for hours on. I know you could, non-compliance issues versus exceptions, but it's a, it's a, it's a. And I, I got a feeling, I trust these people enough that with any exceptions that are written. They've, they've to date addressed each one.
Brendan, can I, um, do you think that it would be possible, maybe that? Maybe at the next month's workshop that we include this discussion as part of it, and then. You know, maybe we can as a group uh, come up with, with the list of exceptions, would that be okay, or?
Are, are we could do that.
Talking, focusing on just what Brian's.
Well, no, no, I'm not saying just what Brian, I'm saying all of us, I I I have some things I'd like to.
Bring up too, okay, okay.
What I, you know.
Cody did as well.
That's a whole month away.
Yeah, I mean, or we can have a special meeting.
What I would, what I would suggest possibly is that Diana, if you and I could work on developing that. And then sending it out to the board members. And then, you know, you guys can provide the feedback to the administration, I, not to me, is that correct?
Or to Terry? Well, do you want them cited as exceptions? I I just need, we need direction on, because we think, we think we're in compliance.
Well, here's the thing, I'm a, I'm one vote.
Right, but I don't want you to be a, I don't want you to be feeling like we didn't meet it next year. We wanna, we gotta, in order to get better, you gotta know what you're not doing well.
Well, my comments will be in the non-compliance, I mean, they're there, I mean, you can, I mean. I don't, I just don't feel that, and it's not taking anything away from our progress, cause we've made progress. Everybody knows it, I just don't think that by, by the very definition of these words over there, so.
Policy.
So, I'm just, I'm just not there.
Well, and I would go back, so when, cause we're always gonna have those issues.
Right.
So, at what point would we be in compliance?
Well, I mean, I think you have, you have a consistency issue, you know, that one of the questions that I asked last night, I'm not sure that I got the response. A clear answer is at what point? Do we say enough is enough, if this kid is continuously disrupting classrooms, when is enough enough? And and, you know, the response is, well, we have available seats at alternative schools and stuff, but what's the consistency on this? If there are people that cannot function in society, there's certainly people that can't, can't function in the classroom, and what is our direction on that? I'm confused, I think it's murky.
And it is.
So, for, for that reason alone, I think that's enough to, to get there until we can figure that out.
Well, that helps me though, yeah.
Say for the students with disabilities portion, that's. The challenge, because it's an individualized education plan, so depending on the student's disability and their services and their goals and things that they're working on. If you were wanting to say, here's the point every time for a student with disabilities. I would say law-wise, I can't do it. But I can say, there's a process to say, here's when means are reconvened, here's when we talk about, here's when we evaluate the IEP. To say, are we making adequate progress, because that part of special education law, we do follow. You know, if a student's not making progress or continuing to have problems, we say, we need to reconvene the IEP. I've done it with Mister Black and Mister Spring where we said, a student's not making the progress. We need to come back together as a team and say, what do we do next for this kid? And that's where, at least on that side for students with. And that's where, at least on that side for students with disabilities, I can't say. Here's the point every time and here's when I do this, because it's based on a kid's individual plan.
Yeah, and I understand that.
Yeah, so if you want something to say, like, if you want me to explain, like, at what point do we reconvene those meetings or do those things?
Well, I mean, it's not really that, it, you know, say you have a, say you have a kid that throws a desk at a teacher. If they have an IEP, they can still go home for the day, is that right or wrong?
Correct, yeah.
Is that happening every time somebody throws a desk?
To be honest, I'm going between the three buildings, um, yeah.
I don't know, it's, I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I just don't have those answers and so I, I'm not comfortable that we're consistently doing.
Well, and it, and it probably will never be consistent for everybody across the board.
But it says it has to be.
Right, so is it written or not?
So I'm a no, I guess if we can discuss it further, and I'd hope we do, but at this point, I'm a no, and I appreciate everything you guys talk about, but at this point. That's just how I feel on it.
Do you think it's, it's the wording of the policy?
It could be.
Needs to be addressed.
Good, we'll work on that and thank you, everybody. For your time there, um. The next one we have, GP ten conflict of interest. Oh, I should do that. Call for motion to approve the operational expectation OE twelve discipline. I have a first.
Can I ask a question? Are you, are you, uh, I guess what exactly are you stating, kind of you?
Well, with the exceptions.
Proving it with exceptions?
With exceptions, yes.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next we have GP ten conflict of interest. This one we're reading, yeah, go ahead and read the first.
All right, board members. Shall avoid conflicts of interest involving any matter pending before the board. A conflict of interest is deemed to exist when a member is confronted with an issue. In which the member or a member of his or her family has a personal or financial interest. Or an issue or circumstance that could render the member unable to devote complete loyalty and singleness of purpose to the public interest. Board members shall be expected to be familiar with Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point five nine codes of ethics. For local government officials, employees and candidates.
This notice was emailed to all board members, um, there were no responses with regards to any non. Non.
Non-compliance.
Non-compliance. So, I call for. A motion to approve policy governance GP ten conflict of interest.
So.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda. Board president, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Can I add one thing to the consent agenda?
Yep, and you know what, we have to talk about one other thing too. I can't, I'm glad you interrupted me.
Sorry, um.
No, it's, it's good that you did.
Um, one resignation, we do have, um, Dane Dupie, who has been an educational assistant for us for a few years. For a student who required, um, one-on-one support. So just due to some family health concerns, he put in his resignation, so Dane Dupie, I would like to add to the resignation list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Donations, Cody typically reads our donations, but we don't have any donations this month, but you have something you'd like to say?
Yep, I just wanted to congratulate the Nacusa High School wrestling team, um, on a great season, they're taking three. Um, wrestlers to state this year, which is awesome, um, the two Alsons, Craig and Aiden, and then Blaze Thurber. And I just wanted to, um, give some kudos to the coaches as they always give back to the youth. And when we had that big snowstorm over a foot of snow, the whole wrestling team, or majority of the team was out shoveling for the community, which is awesome, so. I just wanted to congratulate those wrestlers and the coaches.
Thank you. And I'd add, there's a send-off celebration at eleven fifty on Thursday, so if you can make it, be there. Thank you, Cody. And congratulations, yes, it's awesome.
Yep. Okay. Any other business gentleman? At this point, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So. Second.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Future agenda items, um, board workshop March fourteenth. Two thousand eighteen, regular board meeting March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. We're gonna be covering the results policy S three, self-threatened thinkers, governance policy GP eleven, boardroom violations. And other board work. Keep in mind that we may call a special meeting based on the discussions this evening. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
Um, move to adjourn, I won't be able to make the fourteenth. I'll be in Schaumburg.
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
But I don't, if that's all that's discussed, I don't think it's.
Those three aren't that, you know. If you wanna look at those, if you have any concerns on it.
I will do that, if I need to, if there's anything that.
Yeah.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.